Please a roll call.
Nancy Hennony.
Here.
Roger Schmidt.
Here.
Nicole Cohen.
Here.
Yeah, Rodney.
Here.
Please stand. [inaudible]
[inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for minimum silence. Thank you. Okay. And then, could I get a motion? Please review and accept the agenda for the session.
I move that we accept the agenda for it as presented.
Certainly.
Okay. I'm looking at the [inaudible]. Okay. And so then, we want to go over the proposed agenda. Thank you.
So as you'll notice, looking at the [inaudible], actually, we're beginning at 5:30 on the twentieth to recognize and have a reception for our [inaudible] retirees, and that will be at 5:30 in the conference room, which is the conference room. And then we'll call to order at six. First item on the agenda are the minutes, and we have minutes from four different sessions there. And on the consent calendar, we do have our personnel report, like the unusual there. We have our approval of vouchers, which is 3.14. We have the gifts and donations. And then 3.16 is a new job description for a part-time athletic trainer. This is to meet the need that, like, have a site, like, have a suit of high school for the athletic programs, and it is paid by the athletic department. Thanks.
Is that what [inaudible] was doing?
Yes.
So she's not doing that anymore?
I don't know. No.
Okay. So we have to get somebody else. Because when was she, like, was she volunteering or something?
She was volunteering, and then she was also having someone from her workplace come in.
Come in.
Come in also, and she was paying for that person. She's no longer doing that, so we're actually going to be hiring that same person, and Roger's going to pay for it out of his athletic funds, because we have to have somebody.
Yeah, to have someone in there. Right.
All right. Moving to the action calendar. 5.1 is the long-term lease agreement between our district and Arizona State University. And this IGA was, I guess it's not an IGA, this lease agreement comes due in January, and so the college asked us to bring it forward in December, so that it would be not expiring too soon before it's acted upon. And so, as the process commenced, we also clarified some language in the original agreement as a part of this. Item 5.2 is the transfer of deed agreement for the Cypress property, 301 Cypress Drive, with the city. And in this particular item, the city is looking to further develop that property. They have fields and irrigation there currently, and they would like to develop that into a park, and they have a several-million-dollar plan to improve that. And as a result, they were interested in actually having that property in their name, so they don't invest all of their money and then have it be taken away from them. And so, this is an agreement to transfer that deed in exchange for $1 million, which we would then use to pay off our debt for the transportation lot. The next item, 5.3, is we will be bringing forward a grant that we are requesting for the Master Teacher Grant Program. This is a very specific grant utilizing the Arizona Master Teachers to provide mentoring and training in order to support new teachers. And so, this is a three-year grant. It's $100,000 in the first year, $85,000 in the second year, and $70,000 in the third year. We don't actually have the grant completely written. It's in draft. We will have it ready for you on that date. But basically, what we're looking at is a plan for training that also is sustainable, so that we can support our beginning teachers and help as part of our retention of new teachers through that training, but also, how do we continue to support them? And so, as we're looking at this grant, it would be a three-year term. We could reapply at the end of three years, but we're looking to design a program that is sustainable and not based on just individuals. There's some information here.
I just have a question. I'm curious about the nationally board-certified teachers. What actually, because we just, I just went to celebration for Jamie, and I didn't want to ask that day, because, you know, we were celebrating that she had this achievement. But what's the incentive if there's still money behind it? Like, I hear it's a grueling, grueling program, so, like, why would we encourage our already overlooked teachers to go through this program?
Well, the teachers do receive a stipend each year.
The $750?
No, it's actually $1,500.
Oh, $1,500.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jamie, because she's moved into administration.
Doesn't get it.
It's not in the classroom.
Right.
But didn't we change that?
Well, there are, there are a group of teachers that were grandfathered in, because originally, that was something they would get each year.
Right.
As long as it was in, you know, it was current.
Right.
And then, a couple of years ago, we changed it to be any of new people getting it would get it for three years.
Oh, right. So it was a timeline.
That was what, that was what was.
Because it was like a 10-year, because I think the certification goes for 10.
And then they can re-serve.
So now it went to three.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then it was a thing through, I don't know, is Walter still doing that? They would give it up.
Well, they put a gross sum in.
They would give in some money to the teachers.
The [inaudible].
Yeah, it was an outside group.
Right.
And they gave a donation for those teachers that.
That did it.
That did it. I think it was $2,500 or something.
But I just mean in terms of salary. It seems like it's really grueling to go through, so I'm just curious.
In many other districts, they pay them for that.
Do they?
They graduate on the salary. In fact, my niece is part of that in New York, and she gets, like, $10,000 a year more, because she's a nationally board-certified teacher. We just don't have the money to do that, and we don't. But it's also a prestigious thing.
Okay.
And if you've, if you've gotten that, you know, you put your little thing behind your name, and it's like, it's a thing. And it's, and it's actually, I guess the process itself is really helpful, like, once you actually go through that and really are more mindful of how you're teaching and what you're teaching, it actually improves your teaching along the way.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, you might want to maybe even just talk to some of the teachers that have gone through the program, because it is a grueling.
Well, all I've heard is the presentations from the ones that have.
Yes.
And it seemed, so my concern was, are we, you know, encouraging teachers to do this, and then are these teachers going to eventually leave us, because they only get $10,000, you know, an increase that we're not giving?
That's not what this is, though.
I don't know, but actually.
No, it just jumped out at me, and I was just asking.
No, but actually, part of our plan for this is, starting with our beginning teachers, and working them through a process that by year five, they would actually begin perhaps pursuing the national board certification. So it's providing that foundation.
Okay.
So it is a piece of that. And then the other piece, and I don't want to speak for Brad, but, but we do try to utilize our certified teachers for other kinds of training and development, so that they have a chance to earn extra hourly money, because they have that certification.
Okay.
So they would be the first ones that would be offered those kinds of opportunities.
So that and the rest of the teacher program also, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Item 5.4 is an item from the high school, looking at some course additions and name changes, as well as class fees, that are being proposed to be changed for the 17, 18 school year. Situation behind that gives the detail. We do have, and I think this was brought up at the beginning of the year, there was another, I think it was the, was it the yearbook? This is the one that we talked about. We had to change the name for it to have the CTE course.
Correct.
But some of the courses are existing courses, but for the CTE certification, they have to have a certain title.
Are those those ones on, where they say advanced professional sales marketing and professional sales marketing, and so, name change for student government?
Correct.
That's really a student government?
Right. But, but as a CTE course, they're able to utilize funding and training through the CTE program.
Oh, okay.
So, and, and they're doing, you know, sales and marketing as part of student government already, so it seemed to be a good fit.
So we're going to decrease the athletic fees, because our bond and override pass are override pass. But we're going to, I mean, this is going to be seen as we're just increasing fees in other areas. Is this really something that we have to do?
Well, I don't want to speak for Scott.
Right.
But my guess is, and I'm just taking an educated guess, is this is for materials for these classes.
And I don't doubt that everything has gone up. I, I know it goes up every year.
Right.
My peanut butter is astronomical. I, I understand that it's going up, just thinking it's, all this is happening right now, and we just got this bond and override pass. So if that's what we see is constant increases, $5 here, $10 there, is that going to, is that going to work out well for us? I don't know if that's such a great idea to increase fees. As we're lowering for the sports, we're increasing for AP and math and biology, you know what I mean?
Do you understand?
Just a perception thing.
Curiosity in the audience, is it so that that had to get proposed and submitted on the, like, we don't have an approval yet? I mean, the timeframe wasn't that long ago. Maybe this has been pending as the board item, and those fees are determined prior to it passing, and maybe it's.
Oh, I'm not questioning with any of that. I'm just questioning.
No, I'm just saying that.
Now that it's here, maybe we should reconsider whether we want to.
If the department budgets aren't as limited now, because of that, and he ended this study as of department budgets 30 days ago, it may be worth an ask.
I don't know how early people start preparing their stuff that goes to the board.
Some of this is, you do, you do.
Been in the works for a while.
Exactly.
Right.
One of the things that we'll be coming forward, since you're talking about fees in January, is we will be bringing to the board to eliminate the $1 fee for trans credits for all students. That is one that we no longer have to charge by law, and so that fee will go away for next year. There's a little bit of a balance, isn't there? Something's going away.
That's good.
Just a thought. It's not, it was a shadow.
Okay. Item 5.5, this is one that we've been working on. In our 15, 16 audit, there was a discrepancy noted in our minutes for our high school students, and has primarily impacted those students who are seniors, who are at a full period day. And so, the way that the law reads is that they have to have a certain, a total number of minutes per year, but also a total number of minutes per course per year. And so, when they calculated the instructional minutes in the past, it was always done based on all of the students that had a six-period day, a full day, and do they have enough minutes for the year in that exact. However, this year, what they asked to look at was our students who have a minimum day, which would be a four-period day, is the minimum day for our students. And when they calculated those minutes, what they discovered is that if they only go four periods, we don't have enough minutes in order to claim a full 80-day student. So this.
Are we losing money?
We have not gotten our actual audit finding yet. That was, we're waiting to see how that's going to be reported, but yes, this was for 15, 16, so we cannot go back and make up those minutes. And so, we're anticipating that, I think Heidi did the numbers, I don't remember the number of students, but yes, we will have to pay back some money to be more than money kept. But we also, because of the schedule ongoing, we also are short those minutes now for 16, 17. And because we know about it, in order to not have to pay money back, we need to correct that during the second semester. And the reason that you have some of that is because of assembly schedules, where there's certain minutes for those first four periods, minimum day schedules, and so forth. So Scott and his team have been looking at the student day, and at this point in time, we may have to extend the day at the high school for the second semester in order to regain those minutes for our students. So he's calculating that now. We're looking at probably a 7:45 start time, instead of an 8 o'clock start time, and I'm not sure about the ending time yet, so he's still playing with that. So that's the, the information that we're coming forward, that we're coming forward to the board at this meeting. But we do need to implement something for second semester in order to gain those minutes.
They're not going to put in any 7:00 AM classes?
No. The problem with that is that, that only helps you if you're adding a period to a five-period day. You have to still have the right number of minutes for four periods for the minimum day, so those classes have to get longer.
Well, in the future, though, would you eliminate that, just going four periods? Would you have, you'd have to go five periods or something like that?
So that is our discussion, is either the schedule for next year has to be designed that there are enough minutes, so that would affect the number of minimum days. So some of the things we talked about, for example, they currently have their nighttime, but that's a minimum day, so our nighttime could be a regular scheduled day. So some variety of ways to look at their minutes, but one of the other ideas is that for students, they would have to take a five-period day.
I wonder if they're going to get a lot of flack from kids that have jobs?
I think, I think we will, and I think that's why we're looking at starting earlier for.
Rather than later.
Yeah. There still may need to be going a little bit longer, because, and I, we haven't sat down and looked at it in that, as a final draft, but if you're going to increase the minutes in the first four periods, then you need to increase them in five and six also, because I know, as a, as a parent in the room, if my kid had first-period geometry, and her kid had sixth-period geometry, and my kid was getting an extra 10 minutes a day over the course of a semester, that's a lot more instructional time. There's something unfair about that. So, so more than likely, we would have to extend it at the end as well a little bit. We have to play with that, trying to minimize the impact. But I think it will impact students who, for the students who are in four-period days, I think they'll be okay getting out at almost the same time, but for the sixth-period day students, it'll be a little different.
So is this a statutory change, that they added minutes per class in addition to the total hours that they needed for the year?
No. It's just that they haven't looked at it in the audit that way before. And according to the audit firm, they were given direction from ADE to, when they reviewed minutes, to be sure to be looking at the number of minutes for the minimum-day student, as opposed to the full-day student.
So they look at different things every year, so they focused on that. This year, so we haven't gotten pinged on it in the past.
Correct.
Because they weren't looking at it.
Yes. And there's a bit of an uproar, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
And we know of at least one district that is going to file a suit, so that they would not be penalized for last year. And what we have to kind of determine is whether it would cost us more to join that or just to pay back the money that we are.
Do we know? Any idea how much?
No. Ms. D, do you know how much?
It was all over the place, because they couldn't determine exactly how they would handle that financially. Would they make us lose the whole student? Would they only make us lose a number of minutes and the cost compared to each of those? And so, it's kind of out there right now. Our estimate was anywhere from, could be anywhere from $100 to $750,000. I mean, it was massive, but I don't think that, you know, a lot of districts are in the same boat. I honestly think that they're going to make sure you're doing it right this year, and then maybe they'll just say, well, you know what, we just need to go along with this flow for a little bit. So if they get enough lawsuits and enough people joining in it, they'll probably, you know, I don't even take that into consideration. I don't know exactly what they're going to do.
So I'm not familiar with the statute. So the statute just requires a certain amount of hours during the school year?
Minutes.
If I'm not, is it minutes? It's not hours. It's minutes?
720 minutes for that school.
I'm sorry?
720 minutes for that school.
Okay.
Per period. Is that what?
Uh, yeah. No, okay, don't quote me on that thing. It's 720, that's all that is told, so think about it.
I was just looking to see, I don't have a statute referencing it, maybe, maybe I do. Here, I do have it.
Okay.
Okay. High school students, who are at least in an instructional program of four or more subjects that count for graduation, which would be at least, it is averaging 123 hours per year for the course, and a total of 720 hours for 180 days school year.
Whatever.
So it's 700, so it is hours.
I thought it was hours. So.
123 hours.
So if you think about a first-period class, and it needs 180 days, but you have minimum days and other things in there, so that first period has to have, have met at least 123 hours, and we're under that for one period. So.
Just for one period? The rest of the?
Well, for each period.
Okay.
And so, so for all four periods, they haven't met that limit on the minimum day, and then they also haven't met then the 720 hours in a year for four periods. Is that right?
Right. Are you going to talk about the J-TED issue?
I can't hear you.
Are you going to talk about the J-TED issue as well?
Yeah. So the other, the other piece of that, and you may have to elaborate a little bit, is that we claim them as a full-time student, and then when they go to the J-TED, they're claiming them as a student. But if they haven't done a full day with us, the J-TED can't, can't claim them for the full J-TED either, so it's going to impact the CTE dollars as well for each of those students who also is taking CTE courses.
Oh, that's a real can of worms.
It's really ugly.
Yeah.
It's really ugly. And, but they've been looking at every combination that we can. There are also minimum hours for seventh and eighth grade, but we typically won't have that issue, because they all take the same number of periods. So the issue becomes the high school, where they can take a minimum day.
It's those seniors that only have to take four hours.
So it's not the entire population of the high school, just those, that senior group.
But that's a heck of a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean.
So if we can.
Somebody at the state figured out that they could recoup a bunch of money by auditing us.
There you go. Do you think that's what it was?
I do.
Because they've never counted it this way before.
In all of the, my experience in healthcare with auditors, is that they, they'll pick certain things on certain years that they look at. They may not look at them again for eight years, but they, the trends that somebody's picking up will guide the process of what they look at. So they may have told you every year, your audits look great, and the next year, they come back and slam you, and you're doing the exact same thing, but their focus has changed. You do the same thing in banking. Every year, they focus in on a different thing. You, you say, oh, you have to change this, so you do it, and next year, you think, okay, we're aces, and then they come back and they look at something else that was never even looked at. But it would not surprise me if somebody in, figuring out what the focus was going to be, identified this as an area where they might be losing some dollars that they shouldn't be.
Well, and that's, that's why the auditors told us, there's so many high schools that are in the same boat this year.
So approximately, how many minutes is that a day for a senior that's in a minimum?
Well.
I mean, how off was it? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And is it something that can be appealed through ADE versus suing?
Um, well, it's, I mean, it is in the code.
It's statute.
We have to have it in statute.
Okay.
So we should have known, even though we've never been audited for it.
Okay.
And I'm looking back at my notes here. So even at 123 hours per year for four periods, you don't make 107, 720. And so, it's, that's where the five-period came in for possibly for next year, or, and why it's so hard to gain back those minutes, because we have to have the hours for the year as well.
But wouldn't we still be in a violation if we had five, five hours, but we didn't have enough minutes in each class, in each?
Yes, you still have to have the, the 123 hours per year. But right now, even if they meet that, for a four-period day, you don't get to 720, but the five-periods you would. And so, there, there has to be enough days that are longer, as opposed to shortened. So.
Because part of this, too, is like, if they have, like, a rally or something like that, and they shorten the classes or?
Exactly. So normally, a class is 60 minutes. On an assembly schedule, it's 43. On a minimum-day schedule, it's 44. And so, those start adding up over time, or reducing over time.
What's the statute number?
You know what, I just.
Oh, I thought you had it. I'm sorry. It's okay.
No, I do. I just had the one page of it, though.
Because maybe there's something, not that we can fix it for 15, 16, or even this year, but this is something we can talk to our legislators about, about fixing, because talk about micromanaging each district to death by the minute. I mean, good.
Yes.
All right, well, fine, but let's fix it.
If you lost early release, would that fix it? Because if you have that shortened day, 23 minutes a class, would that put it back into the kitty?
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. I just.
Looking for the number.
I was, ARS 15 dash 009 dot 01 is what the bottom code looks like it probably is.
15 dash?
009 point 01.
Thank you.
I'll get you real close.
Just wondering, you know, you say minimum a day, and I'm, my, my thought process immediately goes to early release schedule.
Yeah.
The early release schedule.
Okay.
Are, are we hurting ourselves at the high school by doing the early release schedule? Is that a potential part of the cure?
That is, that is part of the reason they don't have enough minutes, because they're, when we talk about a student with a minimum day, it means they only have to go four periods, and then they can leave. But when we talk about the minimum day, is the early release schedule at the high school, so they actually shorten the number of minutes per period, so that they can be released. So.
Early.
So, so why couldn't you simply start the process by eliminating early release at the high school?
Yeah, we already looked at that. It doesn't give us enough minutes for second semester.
How many minutes were you needing to make up? Pardon me? How many minutes total did you need to come up with?
For, you know what, off the top of my head, I can't tell you right now in my notes for the second semester. I have it somewhere else, but it's not in the stock.
But we'll have all that at the board.
Yes, Scott will have all of that.
But the idea of getting rid of early release, I mean, it's not just because they want to get out early, it's because they're doing services for, for staff and that, so that was a long time coming.
Right. And at the high school, I think it's only one day a month, that's the staff development on high schools, that they do the nighttime and some other things that we've talked about going to full day.
Elementary is only every Thursday. I don't even know what she said. Elementary is only every Thursday, early release, but the junior high and the high school are on.
The high school has a lot of test early release dates, too. It's just a little bit more complicated than the elementary middle, so I mean, like you said, but they're going to have to look at that picture.
And then, if you have pep assemblies or anything like that, does that factor in?
Yes.
So there are a whole, it's a little more complicated than just saying, this is what we're going to do.
Just cancel everything.
And, and you know, on the early releases, years ago, we didn't have those for professional development and all that, and that's one of the things that oftentimes was overlooked in the schools. The focus was the kids, and that's where it should be, but the focus also should be the improvement of instruction. And early release is one of those things that does that.
I don't, I don't disagree, but I'm a big believer in shared pain. I mean, you know, if, if you had to give up professional development for a half a year, that may be a part of the cure to this and not just extending the school day all the way around, which is what I'm hearing.
Well, this problem isn't gonna go away.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's gonna be here forever.
Right.
And we can't fix what we've done. That's gonna be, you're gonna have fun for that. But I don't see the discussion to go to five periods next year in the subject. You know, you can sit here and say, well, gee, we don't want our baby to go for five periods and we don't want. No, you go to five periods and you resolve your issue.
We actually had the discussion about looking at all the four-period students and having them take five periods for second semester, but we figured that might cause more issues than having the, have start fifteen minutes earlier, you know, so. But that is probably the solution for next year.
And then the year after, I think, is contacting our legislators this year because this seems like a major problem.
And I did find it. It's ARS fifteen dash nine oh one.
Nine oh one?
Yeah.
My daughter, who's a senior, who will kill me for having this thought out loud, but, I mean, it's their birth rate and that's the class that's kind of gotten dinged the whole way along. But they are always, those seniors always finish one week early. How many minutes do they need? And do they have to go to class until the Tuesday before graduation? Instead of till the, I don't know, they have finals three days before. I, I mean, I'm sure somebody had that pedal out. So you don't have to blame it on me and please don't mention it.
We've already looked at that. It's on video.
Yes. Which we're going to widely share.
'Cause that was the thing. We actually talked about, do we just extend the school year by a couple days, you know? I mean, there, that wouldn't do it though, so that's the unfortunate part of this.
And I'm sure, I'm sure all those ideas will be looked at.
They've been, uh, his staff have made, they've looked at options like if they went to a block schedule. If there was, I mean, there's any number of options they've looked at, so.
Well, we'll look forward to seeing what they recommend.
Yeah. Yep. So that's item five point five. Item five point six is the vending machine award. We did receive background proposal on that. Item five point seven is a submission for the annual financial report. And this, um, basically, we had an employee who, an employee who didn't cash a check in the fiscal year it was issued. And so we had to reissue it in the new fiscal year or adjust the VFR for that. The item five point eight is a policy revision on hazard warning postings. Just a couple of small changes on that. Item five point nine is the, um, letter of declaration. And actually, Missy, you're gonna have to explain this part. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
To the treasurer's office about the credit line.
Right, each year in January, um, or right before January, the district can have a credit line. And the basic reason for that is that you don't always have the cash each month that you need to make sure. And this carries, you have to be in the black at the end of the year, so you've got to make sure. But the last payments on taxes are usually in April and May. So normally by that time, you're okay and that covers you over the summer too. So, um, you just, we always get the line adjusted just in case. Um, we've used it many years ago. We used it when, um, there was a change in how we looked at the link for taxes being paid. And, um, so we had to use it that year. But other than that, we've really always tried to manage the money pretty closely to make sure that we always have the funds there before we use them. Sometimes it's a little too much.
Item five point ten is the recommendation to award the bid for the audit services to Enfield and Leach. And we do have the information on the review.
How many bids did you get?
Pardon me?
How many bids did you get?
We got three. Just as an aside, this was my first time reviewing all of the different audit proposals. That was a very interesting process. And then, um, item five point eleven is a placeholder. We're hoping to have, uh, a recommendation for the board on a director of business services. Item five point twelve is the, uh, contract for occupational services with ProCare Health Services. And this was, um, as a result of our inability to fill an occupational therapist position. And then item five point one three is contract services for speech. Item five point one four is, um, annual facility use agreement with the Red Cross, American National Red Cross, that in the event of an emergency, it is for a district to be used for emergency shelter. We have identified that it's more than a small.
Can I bring up one other point? When the board makes its decision on your recommendation, what to do with these hours? You decide you need five periods. The board can't get in long discussions. You're gonna have blood in the water. You're gonna have teachers, parents, and kids all over you about what decision you made. And if we know we need five periods, the board nothing easy simply come out and say, that's it, it's done. Because if you don't, you're gonna have blood in the water.
But as I understand, listening to the discussion, that's for next year. So the thing is, uh, once that recommendation comes up and you can get that out, uh, you know, uh, a lot of schools don't allow this minimum thing. They have five or six hours. I've talked to schools that you go to six periods, that's it. And in the, and the fact of the matter is, uh, you're there to get an education and, and not necessarily to get out of school early so you can go to work. But, uh, you know, so this wouldn't be, we wouldn't be out of, uh, step with a lot of other schools that have more.
No, it's irrational, Missy. I'm just saying that if it gets into a long discussion period, you're gonna face blowback from everybody.
Just one other thing. Isn't there, there's gonna be a financial, uh, cost to adding periods? I mean, this doesn't come with no cost, so that's something that you have to be aware of as well.
And you look at the, it's essentially the number of seniors who are on four periods, how many sections would you need to add in order to add a five-period day? And currently, many of our seniors that are on a four-period day go to the CTE and have a fifth period. But as a CTE class, it's not counting for our minutes, and so, um, that's gonna be one of the dilemmas. Because if they're, have that five period in them CTE, are we gonna have an impact on our CTE program? But we'll, uh, bring forward a recommended policy change in the near future because that decision has to be made as they're planning for next year as well.
Anything else? Okay, well then, uh, I don't know. We don't have any more updates or anything? Okay, so then I'll just take a motion to adjourn?
I'm gonna adjourn.
Second. Terry?
Nancy Anoni?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
Bo Coen?
Yes.
Roger Schmidt?
Yes.
Don Everett?
Yes.